Notice to the folks that are here.
The other two came out after I did.
This is an open session, public meeting, and we're being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay, first on, the continuation of the public hearing for 225 River Road West. So I will reopen the hearing. I just want to mention to you, now, there's been notes back and forth, okay? I'm not trying to avoid you. I tried in my first note, Letcher, I can't tell you that the hearing can be continued or not continued or whatever. That has to happen here at this table with these folks.
And I just put somebody from the committee on just for documentation purposes.
Excellent. Okay, do you wish to give us any information this evening?
Sure. All right, so this is the updated plan after a meeting with Conservation.
So are you glad that you went to Conservation? Before you came up with your final decision?
Yeah, it changed slightly. And then these are two different letters, one from the Board of Health.
You all have copies of the letters.
Oh, in the building inspector one? Oh, you already have?
Yeah, I made copies for them.
All right, I guess you don't need those.
Okay, we have a letter, and I'll just read it for the record, from the Conservation Commission. "The ZBA will be holding a hearing on March 13, 2019. We got a request by the people at 225 River Road West who want to set up a landscaping business. He came into the Conservation Commission for an informal meeting on March 6 regarding wetlands on the site. The Conservation Commission decided that he needed a formal hearing, which we will hold next Wednesday, March 20. In the meantime, if the ZBA should grant approval of his proposal, it should be contingent upon approval by the Conservation Commission regarding the River Protection Act and wetlands laws." And I'm sure, do you have a copy of that?
That letter?
No.
Oh.
That just came today.
No, I've never seen that letter.
Well, no, I didn't know if he sent one to you. If you'd like, you can have mine.
It's dated today. Is that Ron Walter?
It's...
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Cause you're supposed to be here tonight.
He called me today and said he had hoped to be here tonight.
Oh, okay.
But that...
It's Friday the 12th.
I just want to make sure with you, they may still have some questions.
Well, the email from the Conservation that I have from yesterday was, "I've reminded Walter to be there Wednesday night. He will be able to tell the ZBA and board members that we will approve the plan, assuming that the plan reflects the changes that we asked for," which it does, but I know we don't know that. But he can't approve it by himself, so we will come back on the 20th.
Okay, so where do you feel you stand at this moment?
We feel like we're all set.
Yeah, because we moved everything out of the Conservation area.
And we put stones, like folders where they asked...
Oh, is that what those brown things are?
Yeah.
Yeah, so these are, like, they want to go like where the buffer is to put stones, so that would be like a visual marker.
This is the old one.
And then the barn was moved this way, because it used to be...
This is the new one, he's moved it.
Yeah, do you ready to cross that line?
Correct, it used to be over.
So you moved it this way a little bit, about 20 feet it looks like, and then...
Up this way.
It needs about 20 more feet.
And then they did the whole...
Towards, towards the house, Mark.
Yeah, it's more to the left. Away from the river.
Thinking quick.
Okay, do we have a date on here, so we can recognize this plan from other plans?
Yep, they're all...
2001.
Revised 2/28/19, updated 2/5/19.
Now normally, there's a lot of things that have to fall in line for the site plan, and there's a lot of things that are supposed to be on there. But usually, for something like this, as long as the basics are there, we're happy. Does anyone have any questions or want to ask any questions? We have notification of the vehicle that you have, right? That you're gonna pass on here. And what's the weight of the vehicle?
Twelve thousand pounds.
Twelve and fourteen.
One's a personal vehicle, one's a...
Now, what did you do? Did you go up to the website and get this off of the...
Yeah, that's the R and B website, where we pay like...
Okay, so it is your specific registration, right?
Yes.
Okay, and it says someplace here, right?
I think the second... It should have like the color of the vehicle.
I got a written right on the front. This one's 14,000. And that was 12,000.
Okay, so there's two vehicles. So that's just for...
One is a personal vehicle, though.
Okay, so we're back at... The first one really is what I want, I think. Now this one, on the other, next page. What was the square footage we decided on here?
That's going by 43, 560 square feet per acre.
Right, so we're talking about, it's the middle of these two tables, 541. So you're allowed two vehicles. And they both have...
No, one vehicle, one registered vehicle, less than 26,000 pounds gross vehicle weight, plus one trailer.
Ah, one trailer.
Less than 12,000 gross vehicle weight, and you have two employees.
Right, okay. So one vehicle, and you've designated this one vehicle, right?
Yeah.
Do you have a trailer?
Uh, I do.
Does it go with the truck?
No.
Not usually.
Is it registered?
Uh, it is.
What's the weight?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand pounds.
Yeah, you can do that, it's fine.
They need to correct this, this is a typo here. So let's just walk through. You understand the restriction on hours of activity is seven to seven?
Seven, yeah.
No signs, right?
No signs.
Do you have other employees?
Part-time, like seasonal, like one to two, but like right now.
Well, will they be working out of that location?
Not usually, because sometimes they can be at the job site.
Yeah, they go straight to the job site. I only have one, just put one employee.
One, I would say, is a...
Full-time.
Beside yourself, correct?
Yes.
"The external appearance is gonna stay the same. The business shall be compatible with any potentially affected residential premises. Machinery and materials used in the conduct of the business, if stored outside, shall be completely screened from public view."
Which is on the plan that we...
See how loaded and...
And we put pushes in the front.
They're there now, are they? You know the number and size of the vehicles. We've got one truck and one trailer, right? We talked about the hours, no signs. You know we can only give you this permit for five years, and then you'd have to renew it group up? If that's the determination of the board. Okay, let's just look at the site plan. You've put your screening on here. Have you given the town clerk an electronic copy of the...
For the plan?
Yeah.
No, I can email it to her right now.
It's, well, I...
I have it, totally.
Would suggest to you that you wait until after we sign the vellum, and then you send her it.
Okay.
Okay, electronic copy of the vellum. Does anyone see anything else that we need to touch base on? Are you noting where you're gonna pack vehicles?
Yeah, there's a driveway, well, there's a parking area down below, but it would be in that barn.
Right, and this barn is not existing, it's, you're gonna put it in. And you've already gotten from the...
The building inspector.
Building Inspector, Board of Health, and everybody. Nobody has a problem with it. It's 55 by 30. Are you gonna store any materials at your location?
I'm hoping not. The only materials that are there is the...
Materials that will be used in construction of the area.
Well, I understand, but in here, it's screening from, you know, view and everything. If you're gonna store anything outside, it's better to list it in your permit than it is to not list it and then have someone question it afterwards. So do you anticipate any external storage?
Hmm, no.
Okay, so, no outside. Okay. The proposed barn, is it for animals or for your business?
Although we are getting chickens that will be attached to it.
And what's gonna be in the barn? Your vehicle?
Vehicles, yes.
So that's where they'll be stored?
Inside.
Okay. Both of them, the trailer and the truck. Big barn for a trailer and a truck. Wise to think of things later on.
Boys.
Okay, do we have any questions, folks?
I would, I don't know if this needs to be a motion or not, but if we approve this, I would request that there be some sort of a footnote, just because we have a site plan here with the drawing on it of the barn, but I just would feel more comfortable with a footnote, something along the lines that says, "It's shown here, it doesn't exist. This is in no way an approval of the barn." I just don't want somebody pulling this out. Fifteen years from now, you sell the house or something, and somebody pulls this out and say, "Well, you approved the barn before, so now, you know, now we wanna build it."
But they have to apply for the five-year rule, right?
Well, but if they, you know, if they pull up this old drawing and they go, "You guys approved this before, so what's the problem now?"
Okay.
If it's in there...
So the barn doesn't go up, is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, I mean, something happens, and you decide you have to sell, and you have to get the barn built, and fifteen years, no...
That's fine, man.
You know, I...
But wouldn't whomever, like, even like if they were gonna go in front of the building inspector, like, have to go with the five-year rule to have it approved?
Well, that's for the home-based contracting business, but if they just decided they wanted to build a barn, and they come up and go, "Well, we have approved plans, here it is." And I just, I don't want them using this to come back and say, "We approved the barn."
Yeah, I think that's...
We're not really approving the barn, are we?
No.
No, that's the point I wanna make, that we're not. I mean, I don't see any issues with it as it is.
I'll try to word something in there. In other words, any materials will be in the proposed barn that are used for the business, you know, the two vehicles. And I will mention that the barn is not in existence, and that's a separate issue with the building inspector. Because they could build a barn afterwards, even if somebody else bought it, but they'd still have to go for a permit.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. I have a couple of concerns. One, your personal vehicle is letted for dirt data, as far as it goes to it, your dirt data. And that's, you're saying that's your personal vehicle?
Yeah.
It's a company vehicle?
Yes.
Right, I mean...
So you're not, now that's two company vehicles.
But like, even like my personal, like, I drive a Jeep Grand Cherokee, like, we have lettering on that as well?
What kind of plate do you have? Do you have a commercial plate on both of them?
Advertising, you have to. Like, it's the law.
Well, it's the law, but that makes it part of the company.
So like, are you saying that we should take the le... I mean, the way to get around it is to take the lettering off? Because I don't want it to be like, we're breaking our rule? We put the lettering on for that reason?
Then the second one, I believe, was near the first, meaning you said you're gonna store...
The trucks.
The trucks to some other place. They've been in your yard.
Yeah.
They're not in our yard, though.
Well, it doesn't matter, you're storing them in Berlin.
Right, right.
Well, they're on a job site, though, like...
Has your building permit for that job site?
I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't know if you have life in that one.
The builders, like...
Well, are you doing work there?
Next door, yes.
And did you apply for a permit?
It's not under...
It's not under his business.
I'm working for somebody else.
Somebody, I thought you said last time that you bought it, or were buying it.
The lot next door, yes.
Yes, on the lot next door.
But I'm working on the lots next door to that, next to the lots that the building on.
Trucks are parked right near the lot.
Next door, yes.
To your property.
Yes, the one we're buying, yes.
Yeah, there's a six-wheeler and a ten-wheeler, and an excavator. I remember you saying you were gonna move the lots up. They're still there.
Get approval from the other guy.
Okay, so what's the scoop on the vehicles?
What would you like to know about our personal vehicles?
Well, that's a question, okay, but that's enforcement. If we were to approve this, we can only approve it for what is allowed in the zoning bylaw.
That's all we're asking for.
I understand, but the question could come up later, because these are two commercial vehicles, okay? What we approve, it's up to the zoning enforcement officer to enforce.
Okay.
What about these other vehicles that are parked in Berlin? You say it's a job site?
Yes.
Yes.
What's that separate from the house, though?
If you look at it, our house is to the left.
Coming, going toward Hudson?
Yes.
Yes.
It's on the left, so where the seal or whatever it is?
That's the right side.
That's...
Yeah, the seal's the right side.
Which side? The left side?
All wheelers, I thought.
Vehicles are stored.
Right now?
Yes.
Uh, Casselli, but Freeman bought the other two lots that I'm working on.
Okay.
I think the right side.
If you look at our house...
Like going towards Gillis?
Yeah.
All right.
You're on the Gillis side, you're not on the other side?
No. If you look at our house, it's on the left side.
Right, yeah.
On the same side as your house.
What's that?
On the same side as your house.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So it goes the sand pit that the seals all are in, then my house, then the lot that we have a deposit on, then two lots that were bought, two houses still on.
All right, okay.
Like going towards Hudson.
And that's where your stuff is.
Yes.
Is on the lots that are gonna be built upon?
Well, they're not technically there, I guess, but...
It's just, it's right here beside his property.
Yes.
Right here.
But even if you own the other lot, right?
We would have to come back here. I would assume, well, I guess that's a good question.
Doesn't make a difference, does it?
No.
So even if you own that lot, those two vehicles should be parked offside.
Offside.
Yeah.
But they are not.
As of now, no, cause I'm...
Yeah, but even, so if we did the permit, those vehicles have to go?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, they'll be gone.
Okay.
They will be gone.
So you move them to Hudson? You've got to say Hudson.
Yes, yeah.
All right, so, so that would be stipulation too, that they have to...
Be removed.
Be removed, right?
So will say remove any vehicles? Well, we'll call it excess vehicles, how about that? From adjacent property.
Mm-hmm.
Beatrice.
Ten, eleven, sixteen.
So are you, are you buying the lot next door to add to your property?
Yes.
Yes.
Like a buffer.
If they, and how big is the lot next door?
The other one is three acres, too.
So Jenny, your question about how many...
He's not smiling, I don't know.
Isn't it fun dotting all these i's and crossing all these t's?
No, I really feel like those should be like explicitly, step-by-step manual, cause it's definitely been a worry.
But it's different on every, every one, so it's, there are no...
You can be a consultant for the next person, you see, having a...
I feel like I could.
Because if you know what you know now, when you started, things would have gone much more smoothly, correct? You wouldn't have sent things out twice.
I'm still not sure I understand the difference between...
You still not sure?
Return we see in certified mail. That I think I'll always have a warning for a while. The good news is that our neighbors across the street, and the new neighborhood, your mother and your mother-in-law, so she did, so...
Their what?
My mother, our mother, his mother, my mother-in-law bought a house across in the 55 and older.
Oh, so she's over there giving cookies and coffee, and...
She's not there yet, but...
Smoozing all the neighbors?
Yeah, that's why we pay her to go over there.
Just walking, she doesn't have any writing on the side of her car.
No, she doesn't.
No, yeah. Not yet.
You can't, can you, you live in there?
No, essentially, no.
You're supposed to.
They're watching each other. Where's she moving from?
She has a house in Hudson. She's moving to there. She also has a house in Florida, so she's not there all the time, but...
But that's good, you can watch the house when she's not there.
It'll be nice, it'll be nice for the kids to ride their bikes over and walk their dogs, so it'll be really nice.
Hey, this is on our agenda.
We need a motion of a hearing.
Okay, well, would you like to make the motion to please close the hearing?
Sure, let's close this hearing. I'll make a motion.
A second.
Oh.
Jenny.
All those in favor, all those opposed, okay. We talked, I don't know if everybody was at the table at the time, about who's going Saturday.
Working.
Working.
We'll be the only two from here there, except from the planning board. You'll get a chance to meet some of the planning board members. I think Tim's going. What else we're gonna mention? We're done with the hearing.
Thank you.
I know, as long as we talk, he's gonna listen.
I kinda laundered.
All right, well, why don't you write it down on a piece of paper?
Yeah, let me take a picture of it.
It's a nice and square, Letcher.
But what I meant was, the wording didn't come out like the way...
You're a perfectionist, we could give you.
I guess the good news is you have another chance when you have the mile hour one, right?
Right. Well, this is why I want her to know exactly what she wrote.
Okay, madam, check it out.
Just re-read that, make sure that you're happy with it, too.
Okay, subject to appeal by Conservation Commission. "The ZBA has approved a special permit for a home-based contracting business. The proposed unbuilt barn is beyond the scope of this board's scope."
Sounds lovely.
Scope of the scope.
Yes, yeah.
I have a good view.
Okay.
Purview, I like that. Can we change it to purview?
Okay, we get to welcome our new member.
Welcome.
Would you like to tell the folks anything about yourself? Do you know everybody at the table? Would you like us to introduce ourselves?
He's still recording. Yeah, that's where she can go.
Oh, you let them go, the poor things.
We can say an inch, welcome you.
I feel like...
We could be back.
You've been a big part.
No, nothing to say, good to be here.
Okay, I can put it right on this one.
He's another member with a horse barn.
Your newcomer to town?
Really?
He was gonna stick a volunteering.
Yes.
He bought from the local.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, the shed, sort of, yeah. Okay. I don't, I don't remember the barn, it's kind of... Two stall? Do you have horses?
Do you have a chopper?
There were, uh, not yet, that's my friend. There were horses when we purchased the property, but we asked them to move on, so we can put in some fences and clean up the place a little bit. But yeah, I think the plan is to even have some horses again, it's on...
Used to catch fish in the river.
Yeah, is there fishing there?
Yeah.
Used to be.
Wow, maybe they didn't go anywhere?
Across the street, follow the footpath, across the street.
Somebody had one in front of them there a couple days ago.
On for rice.
Oh, really? And they look becky, oh, strangled there.
Oh, my gosh.
Down the road, down the street.
Yeah.
Down like this, damn. Just skate there.
Going over into that.
That's where we stopped, exactly, way up the hill. Fish down the forks, all the way down the big hole, and then down the...
Wow, I didn't know, I'll look forward to that. I mean, to be honest with you, that's part of the reason why I'm here. When we purchased the property from the Brennan's, that there was, at one point, they had 11 acres, and they carved off three and a half to give to their brother, apparently. At least that's the story that was told to us. And the town said, "No, they couldn't do that." So when we went to purchase the property, it was very confusing for us. You know, we didn't know why they were leaving after so many years, and our fear was, they were, someone was gonna put in a big, you know, 200 condo unit in the backyard. And so we came to the town here and just wanted to confirm if that was gonna happen or not. And it was a really difficult process to find that information. Even to this day, I still have no idea if it's really gonna happen or not. I feel like it's not. We wouldn't have bought the property if we thought it was happening. But that really made me think, like...
Well, you'll be here in case they do.
And here I am.
You can vote against it?
Voting no.
I think I know that three and a half acres, it was, there's a paper road.
Yeah, yeah.
And the problem was, it wasn't a buildable lot, because the frontage on the paper road doesn't count.
A fact.
Exactly, and so our concern was, so our question was, who made that decision? I guess there was a hearing at some point, and the board here said that they couldn't do that, but they also told us that they could, they could come up for a hearing again, and the new board could change their...
Yeah, definitely.
So then I want, I wanted to learn, well, how are they basing their decisions on?
Guiding with your luck.
And that's what we're, I don't know what they base their decisions on, And that's what we're, I don't know what they base their decisions on, but it just made me realize that it's all volunteers and it's all folks trying to figure it out together, and so maybe I can help.
I wanna think the seal was owned by, I think it's Andrew Sich. They had a little barn out there, and they had-
He passed down the ownership.
Critters out there.
Do you want your little signs?
But we also need to prove against-
Well, that decent, and combine that with the back one, I think that would just be the overall.
Thank you.
Bye.
Later.
Twenty-two and five years.
We oughta come back sooner, you know, keep it busy every month.
Christmas.
And I'd love to talk to you separately, I mean, you know, it doesn't matter, we purchased the property now, so whatever happens, happens, but it, you know, it is fascinating to me.
Are you shut off?
No.
No, the red light's on. Wouldn't you like to turn that off?
We need to approve the minutes.
We need to approve the minutes.
Let's approve the minutes, so I don't give my voice recorder to him.
I vocally approve the minutes of-
February thirteenth.
February thirteenth.
Is there a second?
A second.
And this is as presented?
Yes.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anyone abstaining, 'cause maybe they weren't here?
Half.
Oops, I'm saying. Okay.
Okay. I just wanna mention a couple of things. There's, there's a lot of stuff flying around about Whitney Estates.
Still on.
I understand.
Oh, okay.
About Whitney Estates, okay? And one of the things I would like you folks to do is stay away from it.
Totally.
We can't do anything for anyone unless they submit a petition to us under what authority we have. And by in any way getting involved in any of the dissertation, we could end up being tainted for any hearing that may or may not come. The next thing was, who else was looking for, oh, the solar array? I fully expected to see them here tonight. Because they're complaining, they're complaining that their financial folks wanna make sure that the batteries that they need are part of the permit. Okay, so again, they, it's- Well, they wanted a revised decision, which, as far as I'm concerned, would take a whole new hearing. My premise is that there's a lot of things that we discuss when we're doing a site plan or anything else. And if this, this was not their first rodeo.
No.
And if they feel it's important that it's in there, they should ask that it be specifically in there. Because otherwise, the decision would be a transcript of the hearing, okay?
He's so phony.
Excuse, that's fine. So, unless they come, I told them I cannot speak for the board, is what my answer to them was. And I was surprised not to see them here this evening to ask us.
Would that be basically the same things that we do for, like, green acres and-
Could be substantial change to come.
Change until they found answers for that, or is that, is that a major change, or just?
For the site plan?
The site plan.
Yeah.
It's, it's not really a change, but the permit has been filed with the town clerk. The twenty days have passed. I personally feel, and, you know, if they were here, what I would discuss with them is, well, would your financial folks accept a letter from the building inspector and the fire chief saying that this is okay? Because I'm assuming that what they're, there must be some insurance issue or something going on. So I would think that that would be the better way to go, but they're not here this evening, so, and I'm not gonna get caught up in any one emails with folks.
Totally.
And then make promises that we can't make. Okay, having explained that to you folks.
Yeah, the emails are, this past month have been-
Bing, 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 what's hanging there?
And that's not the only email, I have to check regular.
But again, if we just, you know, stay out of the fray with tomorrow.
I have seventeen unread emails.
Okay, I think unless there's some, we have something else.
I have one now.
If someone wants to entertain a motion to, yes, sir?
I have one question for you. The Kate of Grohl, I need to request a minor change, because we held off on naming the road.
Okay.
And that's going in there.
Yes.
So I just wanted to see what steps that we needed to follow with Mr. Rhodes to just name the road. That's all we're doing.
Between you and the post office, as far as I'm concerned.
So it doesn't need to be on the-
I, this, you don't, it's a subdivision, so it's a private roadway. So, you know, that's not even a municipal roadway.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Barry usually names the roads.
Right, I already have the name for it, I, we just didn't know if we needed to add it to the plan, just to make everything-
What is the name?
I don't remember. 'Cause we gave another name last night up on Peach Hill, so I don't remember what it is.
And what was that?
The one up on Peach Hill's gonna be Gibbs.
Gibbs.
Gibbs Road.
Was Mr. Egger involved in that?
Yes, that's who gives me all, all of my names and-
And tells you whether it's a road or a street or an avenue, right?
Correct.
What are we gonna do without him?
Yeah, don't even think about it.
Okay, um, is that-
That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, we, it's not a, it's not a change to the permit or anything, we don't, we didn't name the road, we just showed it as roadway.
I've been trying to keep ahead of that, like, at the planning stage, and have that added right at the beginning, so that way it comes through and it's, everything's listed.
Basically, it's like, just like, uh, Green Acres, we never named, I don't know, did Barry name any of the streets down there?
Or even like off of Pleasant Street, there's three or four houses there, and they've got a road name.
Yeah, that's a, I think that's a lane, eh?
Kendall Road. Kendall Road, the one on left the inside?
Kendall, after the builder.
Yeah.
Okay, folks, if there's, anyone else have any other comments about whatever?
I'll make a motion, we close the meeting.
Is there a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Yep.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?